Did you? Oh, thanks. I always forget to go down and get that.
How's your new little one?
She's great.
Is she doing it? How old is she now?
Nine months.
That's awesome. Hello, Mark. So you guys are gonna let it go?
We ready?
It's rolling.
Ready?
Yep.
Good morning, everyone, to the Iron County Commission meeting. It's Monday, the twenty-fifth day of November, two thousand and twenty-four. And we would like to excuse Mike, Commissioner Blake. And I will make a motion to have Paul be our pro temp chair for today.
I'll second that.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, well, and we're gonna start out today with a prayer by Jeannie Bartholomew. And then we'll be, we'll be followed, or led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Luke Little.
Our dear heavenly father, we're thankful today for the many blessings that thou has given us. We're thankful that we have the time to be able to meet as a county and to make those decisions, which helps everyone in our county. Please bless at this time the commissioners that they might be able to make the decisions that they need to do, to do. That would be best for all of us. In the say this name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Will you all please rise and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance, ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We will go ahead and look at our approval of the minutes for October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there any discussion or questions on the minute?
Thought they were fine. I will move to approve the minutes for ten twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second that. It's been moved in second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye. And then the claims, I will approve the, move to approve approval of claims from payments from November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four to November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second that. It's been moved in second to approve the claims for payments to pay the bills, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, it's been moved in, or it's motion carries.
And again, I'll, oh, okay. Did you write it in? Okay, I'll, no, I'll use a typewriter later, so.
They've got it.
Oh, good job.
They already did it? Oh, Chanel, good job. He wasn't here for that one anyway.
Okay.
So he wouldn't have approved.
Okay.
Good job.
I don't remember doing that, but okay.
Way ahead of us. All right. We'll move on to our departmental reports and we'll start with our auditor, Lucas.
Good morning. I don't have a whole lot to say, you'll hear from me a lot later, so I was gonna keep it kinda short. But the last few months, I've been working on the budget with you and also all of the department heads. So we have the budget, public hearing presentation today. And then we've had Board of Equalization a couple of months ago, that ended in September. Then we had all of the hearings, my chief deputy Carrie Christiansen takes care of that. She schedules all the hearings between the people appealing and then the assessor's office. So those went well, we did have a lot of appeals this year, so it was really busy. But we have that all wrapped up. And then we have abatements, Michaela presented on that a few weeks ago. And so we have all that wrapped up right now. So we've been super busy the last few months, we're kinda coming down to more calm time of year and then getting ready for the new year. So that's all I have to report on and I'll talk later.
All righty.
Perfect, thank you, Luke.
Thanks, Luke.
All right, counsel on aging, Stephanie.
Do I need to address this? Okay, because I'm short, so there's that. I actually made notes so I can keep on track because there have been a lot of new things that have happened since I've been there. I've been there about five months now and so there's been a lot of changes that, you know, a lot of people have had to go through. But honestly, Cedar and Perron Senior Centers are doing really great right now. It was rocky at first for a lot of people, but things have been smoothing out and we're all finding a good groove and everything. And that's between the staff, the volunteers and the seniors that come in there. Between the two centers, we serve approximately two hundred meals with the meals on wheels and around sixty congregate meals, that means the people that come in there and eat and, and visit. So that's kind of what we're sitting at, which is, from what I can tell from looking at past numbers, is kind of right along about the same, same number, so that's good. We have had some changes with volunteers, I have a lot of volunteer meals on wheels drivers. Some have moved or needed to retire, they've been doing it for years. And so I'm actually in the need of volunteers, so if anybody does know anybody that would like to volunteer their time delivering meals or being a receptionist or even calling bingo, please have them call our office. The yoga and the fit and fab classes are probably the most well-attended classes that we have. In fact, the room, they, they're in that extension room that was built a few years ago at the top. And we ended up having to move even everything out of the way and they're still kind of filtering into the hallway because they're so well-attended. So I actually see us maybe trying to extend new times or days to be able to do that. But a lot of the people will come to all of the classes, so it's really great to see those people in there. Let's see, at the start of July, we received our social services block grant through Five County and the amount of eleven thousand dollars on that grant money we used to help pay for transportation costs. And we also renewed our contract with Five County for the fiscal year. And that is for a total of three hundred and forty thousand dollars, which helps pay for meals and services provided to the seniors. We recently implemented a code of conduct, which ironically, we were the only senior centers that didn't have one. And as part of getting everybody kind of on board with that, we actually are redoing our intake forms, so we're using the approved DAAS forms, which stands for Division of Aging and Adult Services. So not only, like, it's a, it's a trial, cuz there's probably over three hundred seniors that use the centers, I'm not even really sure of the number on that. But we're having each one of them fill out a new intake, signing a waiver of liability and then signing the code of conduct. Some people have been a little taken aback, but most people have been great and they understand. But the biggest thing this is giving us is a secondary phone number or re-upping our stuff cuz their seniors were like, we haven't seen him in a bit and we try to call and their phone numbers are disconnected, their secondary person we don't have. And so we can't even check on them and so I was like, let's just start fresh. So we're trying to do a brand-new start coming January. We had one of our cooks, Paul, he just barely retired on Friday. So that position was open through Friday and hopefully we'll be interviewing next week for that position. And then, of course, we have hired two new office employees, Olivia Meacham and Tony Roach, and they have been doing amazing on just figuring things out. In fact, Olivia has been finding out that some of our reports in the past had been maybe inflated in some areas and she has been really pulling a lot of information and understanding how things are, so we're getting right on track with that, which is great. And then we've had multiple maintenance projects that have been tackled ever since the maintenance department started taking over. Thane has been kicking butt at finding things, like, we've had some pretty insane things that we were not ready for, like, trying to find the main water shut-off valve to be able to fix things and it was buried under concrete and grass and mud. And it had to even have the sheriff's office come and help take out cement and dig holes. And it was quite a project, but we got it done. But Thane has been helping us just get a lot of things back on track to where we need to be.
There not a main shut-off inside the building?
No, this is for like the lawn and stuff.
For the sprinkler system?
They weren't, they weren't even winterizing the sprinklers, they were just turning the timer off every year. And so, so there was some broken pipes and he was fixing that and in order to fix that, he had to find where that main water line and, man, it was, it was a job. So I don't even know how many weeks it took cuz they started it right as I started, but it took a while. We also had him pulling out some bushes, we had some really overgrown bushes and being right next to the water, we had so many yellow jackets and some of the seniors were getting bitter, stung by them. And so I says, let's just get rid of the problem, make things cleaner, and so we're doing that. So really grateful for him. Also, ever since he took over doing our front lawn, I've had so many seniors that come and says, your lawn has never looked better. So a lot of people that are coming in there are noticing how much cleaner our building's been. Pest control company, they're happy they're not seeing the amount of spiders and stuff, like, simple little things like that that the seniors are noticing and just really praising about. So I like that they're doing that. And then our last thing is, we're gonna be working through the obstacle of figuring out how to kind of share our space with people that wanna use it after hours, like with the Lions Club. So that's what we're kind of working through right now. You guys have questions?
Gonna talk about that a little later.
That'll be perfect.
Yeah, in our ten o'clock meeting, we'll kind of hash that out a little bit.
Commissioner, I, I put that toward the end, but I, I didn't realize we would probably want it closer to the beginning, so.
Is that okay if we move?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll just, we'll probably do that.
So you don't have to stay so long.
I'm working in Perron today anyways. Anything else?
I think that's it. Good job.
Okay, yeah, good job. Thank you.
All right, I don't see tourism here today.
Oh, she, she had a medical thing she's working through.
Okay.
Yeah.
Parking wreck, then, that's same.
Yeah, that's, I heard.
Sheriff and Corrections.
Who gets to go first?
It's cuz he just walked in. Thank you.
All right, so our budget's at seventy-eight percent. I think it's way close, it's way higher right now. This is through October. So we're, we're pushing right at the tip-top of our budget. That comes into play mostly because we have some unexpected inmate medical expenses. Not only one inmate, but we have, we have multiple now that have higher costs on their medications. I'll just, I'll just explain it a little bit, is that jails don't have insurance on inmates cuz we could never find an insurance provider that would do that for all of our inmates. So we do get some discounted medical costs where we can find them. We do try to find grants and things to do that, but sometimes the bill just ends up right on our plates. And so we've never pushed our medical budget this close to top and out, but we will go over this year in our medical budget. So just, just so that that's out there. Our culinary costs are staying pretty close to the one-dollar range, which we are very grateful for that.
Per mil.
Per mil, a dollar per mil, which is, it's phenomenal. And I think, we're very thankful to our culinary people because they are, they're incredible to keep our costs that low. We, so our, our bookings are getting crazy. We, one of my corporals came in to talk to me this morning and she's like, hey, she's like, we have never, she goes, I got here, she's like, we had twenty-three commitments and then we had twelve new bookings over the weekend. So that is just our workload, that just, that puts, that's on fire. She said that by the end of the weekend, cuz we work every other weekend, my, our staff was just like, all right, I think it's time that we don't even want to be here anymore. But our workload is getting pretty, pretty heavy, especially on the weekends. Let's see what else. We are, our work crew, of course, is always doing awesome and they help out all over the place. We have four vacancies, so last time I was here, I was doing high kicks that we were fully staffed, but now we have four deputy vacancies and one nurse vacancy. So we do have an open roster right now for our corrections deputy. We did interview a, a couple nurse applicants, so we'll be working through that this week and hopefully we can get a nurse on board. We do, of course, have our FMLA and military leave that affects our overtime. And also the hunts have, I mean, not always, every year affects our overtime. So our overtime has been high in the last, over the last quarter. We did have the three deputies just graduate from the academy, so we're excited to get them back and get them trained and help out with some of this workload that we have. Our Ignite program has been awesome. And we just had four, four inmates get their GED. So that, that's really, a really big deal. The school district has always been in the jail, they just, they're required to be in the jail, actually. But they have, typically, they, they get their like little step increases and stuff, but to actually have an inmate graduate with their GED is actually a really big deal. We just had four. So that was, that was exciting. And what we've done with Ignite program is that we have tried to incentivize it. So every step that they get through their GED, we let them pick out of a little commissary bucket, which is, so they get like a sticky bun or a cup or, and it's amazing what they'll do for a sticky bun, which they probably, I mean, they might be doing it for the sticky bun, but it is giving them the skills to make it when they get out, so that's exciting. The Inside Out Dad program, so that's a program that comes to us from Utah State University and we also have been doing graduations for that. And we just had twenty-seven graduates. So that is, that is a big deal. And that, what that does is it helps them with their communication and their skills with their families, whether they're a dad or not a dad, it still gives them the skills to succeed. So we're seeing, we're seeing some great, great things out of our Ignite program. So, yeah. Any questions for me?
And you're pretty limited in your space.
Oh, yeah, we, our community.
When we have our new jail, you'll be able to even do more.
Our community is so awesome and we, they, they'll come in, any like little hole that we'll give them, they're like, hey, we wanna teach skills. So we really appreciate that and in our new facility, we'll be able to offer so much more. And so that's, that's exciting, that's the goal, right? Is to get these, get these guys and gals out there with some skills, so they don't come back.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Good?
Good.
Okay.
Thank you very much, good report. Sheriff Carpenter.
Thank you. We always get the green and gold. I was gonna ask you first thing, I've noticed some of the sheriff's trucks out on the freeway. Is that something we always have done or are we helping the highway patrol or?
Right.
Is that what that is?
Most of the time, if you see Mark doing it out on the freeway, it's usually assisting highway patrol most of the time.
Yeah, when they're on vacation or whatever.
Or whatever it is, a lot of times they're just busy and they have an accident or something that they're not able to respond to and so we go ahead and, and take those, those accidents or a lot of times we may be the, the closest one. So we'll, we'll end up.
I've seen him out, you know, patrolling out on the freeway and I wondered because I hadn't seen that before. In the last couple of weeks, I've seen a couple of different.
Yeah, a lot of times, you'll see it a lot more, usually at nighttime and whatnot cuz during the day, usually highway patrol's pretty well-staffed, but a lot of times when their numbers get down for vacation or whatever it is, then you'll, you may see us out there on the freeway more often. But yeah, a lot of times those are either agency assists or, well, they're pretty much always agency assists, but it's, sometimes we're taking the call because they just don't have anybody available. And really, before we get going here, you know, Shalom was talking about our Ignite program and I'd like to thank BZI, BZI donated ten thousand dollars to us towards purchase of a virtual reality welder so that we can start the welding program in the Ignite program. So we're still working on coming up with the, the funds for that, but we're looking at maybe being able to use some of the opioid money to be able to make up the difference for the purchase of that. There's a couple of other things that we're looking at as well. So I need to get with Chad and, and the committee and see if we can get some of this stuff worked through here and move forward with, with some of that. Go ahead and just jump in here with, if you'll just go to the next slide. I don't know if it's easier for me to do it here?
No, I just, I was switching the cameras around.
Okay. So again, kind of the, the same, same type stuff, SWAT team has been busy. We're up to twenty-four, or twenty-five call-outs a year to date. The most recent was a barricade suspect in the house, which they were able to go through and, and get him out safely. And we're, we're always happy that we've had really good results with the SWAT team, with their patience and, and the way they train and operate. But it, it gives us a, a lot of protection, you know, with, with very volatile and dangerous situations. So we're grateful for that. And we're using them a lot more with the task force because, you know, with JRI, we, we've seen a lot more weapons used in, in search warrants for, for drugs. And so, you know, where a lot of these cases become, have the potential being volatile, we use a, a team to, to be able to help serve those warrants and make sure that everybody is safe, including the, the suspects. And as always, the drug task force is very, very active. You know, it seems like right now we've got really three agents over there working, you know, countywide. And they're doing more work with the three agents than has been done in years past with, you know, five agents. And so there's just, there's so much, so much drug activity, you know.
I saw this morning on the news, two hundred a day of Americans are dying of fentanyl. Two hundred a day.
Right. And that's, you know, that's the kind of stuff that we see is, is, you know, a lot of fentanyl, a lot of methamphetamine, some heroin, but the, the two big ones are fentanyl and methamphetamine are the two, two biggest ones that we're, we're dealing with. Just, if, the, the first number here is what we are current year to date. The second number is what we were in September, when I briefed you the last time we were here. Just going over some of those things, abandoned vehicles, aggravated assaults, aggravated robbery, assaults with weapons, aggravated assaults on law enforcement, simple assaults, air support, agency assists, agency assists. This kind of goes back to what you were just talking about, Maryland. Is, you know, four hundred and thirty-two agency assists by the sheriff's office to, to the other agencies within the county. Burglaries, twenty-eight, child abuse or neglect, thirty-eight, one of them being an aggravated case. Fifty domestic violence cases, hundred and ninety-four felony offenses, sixty-one fires, which, you know, right now with people starting to use their fireplaces again, this is a time that we end up starting to see a lot more chimney fires and things like that. So, you know, just remind everybody to be cautious, if you haven't cleaned your chimney, you may wanna get it cleaned, you know, try to take care of yourself there. K-nine, three hundred and forty-six, mental health, eight, weapon offenses, twenty, accidental gunshots, four. And, you know, the kind of the remarkable thing about that is almost all of them are out on the range. So, you know, when, when you're out shooting on the range, be aware of your muzzle awareness. You know, think about what it is you're doing. Weapons can be dangerous and if you're stupid, you're gonna shoot yourself, so. Misdemeanor offenses, eight hundred and fifty-eight, other offenses, one thousand five hundred and sixty-seven, public relations, twenty-three, search and rescue, twenty-six, sex crimes against children, eight, with two of those being ICAC cases, those are internet crimes against children that come to us through the state. Other sex crimes, forty-two, with four being reported as rapes. Hundred and eight warrants, forty-five welfare checks, five hundred and forty-nine drug cases. And those are, those are drug cases within the sheriff's office, that doesn't count what, what the task force is doing.
Sheriff, what was the, what would you attribute the big difference in the K-nine numbers to? That was a pretty big.
They're, they're just being a lot more active right now. One of the things that we've done countywide is the K-nines countywide, regardless of what agency they work for, they support everybody else in, in the county. But a lot of times it was hard to tell if there was a K-nine that was on duty or not. So what we've done is we've given them their own call sign designator as a kilo unit. So if, say, SUU police needs a K-nine, they can look on the CAD and see there's a K-nine that's readily available through one of the other agencies.
Made that more.
It makes it more, more available, more useful, so. DUIs, fifty-three, alcohol offenses, thirty-two, animal problems, four hundred and seventy-five. Total report, six thousand three hundred and ninety-nine for the year. Last time I talked a little bit about some of the current legislation. And one of the big things is we'll probably see further enhancement of last year's bill assigning school security to the sheriff's office. That's, it's going pretty well, we're, we're pretty close to having guardians in all the schools now. We've been doing a lot of background checks, a lot of weapons qualification training, different things like that. And we're pretty close to having guardians in each of the schools whenever children are there. We talked last time about the OSHA rule, which could be very detrimental to volunteer programs, especially search and rescue. We're still waiting to, to hear what the final verdict is, is going to be on that. We've got Representative Malloy in Washington, DC, working to help us combat that. I think, and we're still facing the problem with the FCC ruling and the way that that affects our, our jails. One of the big things that we are running into out in the county is group homes, runaways, assaults, sex crimes. is group homes, runaways, assaults, sex crimes. This next chart kind of just goes to show that. And this is only, this is only runaways. This has nothing to do with the assaults or the sex crimes or anything else that we're dealing with out in those group homes. This is just runaways. But you can see that in the difference from 2022 to 2023 in our responses to group homes. And if you threw in all the assaults and all the sex crimes that we're investigating on top of that, that is a huge number. I mean, we're, we're dealing with, with these group homes a lot of the time. And we've met with a lot of them to try to figure out how we can reduce some of those numbers. And a lot of them are just as frustrated as we are because they're, they're being run by the state and the state doesn't let them do anything. So if you got a child that frequently runs away, they won't let them lock their windows or.
It's changed a lot. I have a friend that works in that industry and it's changed a lot. They don't let them even touch them. If they want to stay in bed all day, they stay in bed all day.
And it's.
It's sad.
And it's.
They're not helping them.
It's becoming a huge frustration for us because it's costing us a lot of money and a lot of resources and deputies to go out and deal with the same child over and over and over and over again until the state finally makes the decision to remove the child and put them into a different program. And, you know, we have more and more of these houses coming into the county. So, you know, I don't know what we can do to.
It's hard to stop them too. It's really hard to stop.
It's extremely frustrating. And I don't know if this is something that, you know, we can start charging.
There's some legislation that we can get to help us.
We need to do something because.
I wonder too if we could have a conversation about like zoning uses and maybe be less.
Friendly for them.
Open to those kind of things.
Yeah.
Only because, I mean, you know, statistics like this make it very easy for the commissioners to say, well, listen, that's not a good fit for our county because it costs us money.
So if you go to the next slide, John.
I wonder if, if we could.
Oh, there you go.
We could help, we could help. That they would have to pay for some of the costs.
If you look at this, this slide here, again, this is just runaways, only runaways for last year. You know, and I would guess that our runaway numbers is probably even up this year from last year. You know, but then if you figure in the assaults, in the sexual assaults, in the other, other things that we have going on in those homes, you know, that's, by the time you add all that cost in, that's one full deputy for a year that it's costing us just to deal with group homes. Currently, we're up to strength on patrol. Our explosive detection K-9 is up at post going through its training for post certification. And we just became aware of a new program that we're working with the State Department. The State Department rotates their dogs from overseas on a pretty regular basis. And typically what they do is they retire their dog at seven years just because of the, of the.
Stress on them.
Takes the stress of being overseas and whatnot. But, but what they do is so that they don't have to buy too many dogs at one particular time is when they rotate back at the end of an assignment, they're adopting those dogs out. So sometimes you can get a dog that's younger, six years old or whatnot, still has, you know, three or four years of use left in it. And it's free to the law enforcement agency. So we're looking at getting a second explosive detection dog through this program.
That'd be helpful for the schools if you have bomb threats. Is that?
Right. So it does a couple of things for us. As one is, you know, it gives us the ability of being able to run explosive detection dogs through unlike schools or other public buildings where there may be a bomb threat that's called in or, or just as a proactive measure to make sure that nothing's being brought in to those environments that shouldn't be brought in. But the other thing that we're finding again is, like I said, in a lot of the drug cases that we're working now, we're finding that stolen guns are being traded for drugs. And we're end up having a lot of stolen guns and whatnot. And a lot of times we can't find them. We know that they're there, but we can't find them. So this will.
And they sniff those out.
Yeah, this will help us to find those, those guns and be able to hold these people more accountable for the crimes that they're committing. So, and with explosive detection dogs, when you're working with explosives, especially if it's like a bomb threat or something, you want to run them in pairs. So if one dog alerts, you want to be able to bring another dog through and see if that dog also alerts. If the two dogs alert, you got a problem. You know, so, but it just ensures that both dogs are learning to, in order that they've been trained to. So, so that will be a big, big benefit, I think, in the long run for the county. Just on our personnel, I just want to express my appreciation of the commission for everything that you've done to try to help us out. I know this has been a difficult year. And, you know, with the growth of the county, we've got a lot of needs, you know, in order to try to keep up. But we know that the commission's done everything that they can to help us out. We appreciate it very much. You know, of course, we, you know, it's just like Christmas. We don't always get everything that we ask for. But, you know, we got a lot of things that were very important for us and very needful. So we appreciate all that you've done to help us out there. You may have seen that the groundwork has finally started to take place over on the jail. So we're grateful that that's moving forward. And, and as you're aware of the pre-cast cells, we had the mockup to, we're about ready to start going forward with the pre-cast cells. So things are moving forward and we appreciate all those efforts that are being made. Any questions for me at all?
I have, I was gonna talk in my report about the receiving center down in Washington County. While you're here, I just thought I'd ask you about it. And have you guys utilized that service much yet?
It's pretty difficult for us too, just because of the amount of time that it takes.
Right.
The families can take them down there if they would like to, which would be very helpful if they're to the end of the rope and they don't know what to do with a mental illness.
Well, this is.
It's really a good thing.
The receiving center specifically for, yeah, for, for mental, mental illness type situations. It's a 23-hour facility. So it's, it's not technically, you know, an inpatient type facility. It's, you know, but.
They can stay over though.
They can stay over. But they've got very limited bed space on that. And they have to be able to look towards getting them into another facility.
But they have, they have professionals in there that, that know where to send them and what to do with them.
Right.
If, if somebody's very frustrated in a family member or whatever with that type of a situation, that would be the place to take them.
And they can help them get on their meds and, you know, get whatever other counseling help they need, whatever. I think it's a great thing, but, but it's just, it's, it takes us so long to be able to get down there and get back and, you know.
Which they had to decide where to put it. And it went to St. George because, or to Washington County because they have more people than we do, quite frankly.
In our live county behavior health meeting this last week, we talked, they gave a report on that and they said it's been very successful. Because if an officer picks up somebody that needs help and take them to the hospital, they usually just come right back out. They don't want them.
Exactly what happens.
The, you know, they don't want them in the jail necessarily. Or if they'll agree to go get help in the center, they won't. So they'll say, look, we won't take you to jail if you'll go get help you need. So they, they're finding success, but it, but I know it's a challenge with the distance, but like Marilyn said, the families can take, you know, people down, then their family if they need help and others, you know.
Yeah. And that, you know, that's, that's always been one of the frustrating things for law enforcement is, you know, if we find somebody that is a threat to themselves or others, then we can do what's called a pink sheet, which is a, it's a mandatory admittance into the hospital for, for evaluation. And there's times that the deputies are still filling out the pink sheet and they're already releasing them from the hospital, you know, because they, they claim that they, you know, what they're telling, what they're telling us and what they're telling the hospital.
It's two different things.
Things, you know. And so it makes it hard for, for the hospital to, to help them if they're not completely upfront and honest.
We're still getting beat up on social media about the jail. And the sad thing is, is most of the people that, that are saying things, they've probably never been to a meeting to talk what, what our issues are. We, we are full. I mean, unless they're.
And we, and we have been full for years. And with President-elect Trump's policies and.
Will change.
The new, you know, appointee for Homeland Security Secretary. You know, I've been on the phone with the US Marshals Office three days in a row last week because of ISIS concerns about where are they going to put detainees when they arrest them on, in accordance with the new Homeland Security Secretary's policies that he's talking about right now. And, you know, we're, we're full. I mean, we, we have no more space at the end.
Yeah, the, the Bryanhead mayor, he always, he told me this story of, he says, well, my marshals are bringing people down to you, but, and then before they leave, they're already out because we're full. If they're not violent criminals, if they're a violent criminal, we'll keep them in and Shalon will have to find a closet to put them in or whatever. But, but. But then he says, but at least they're not in Bryanhead. At least they're in Cedar City instead of Bryanhead. Well, that doesn't make me feel very warm and fuzzy. I'm concerned about that and I, I don't think it's a good precedence that we're letting people out. I mean, we don't have room for them. I mean, I know that they have to go back to court and that type of thing. But people that are beating us up on social media, they need to know that the jail is full.
Well, and it's not just that. It's in 2018, when I first ran for sheriff, this was a major, major topic of discussion. The citizens of Iron County recognized that a new jail needed to be built and they wanted it. And that was a huge discussion point while we were running for office.
Why you got elected because you talked about that.
I talked a lot about that. And that was one of the things that I talked in detail about is that we were going to build a new jail because it's what we had to do. We had to be able to do that. And, you know, we listened, in all the public hearings, we listened very carefully to what the community said. And, you know, the property owner, and probably rightly so, said that they didn't feel that they should be the ones that had to carry it by themselves, that it should be, you know, a, something that, that.
A sales tax so that it was a consumption. And it's a much fairer tax. People on fixed incomes won't pay near what other people that are working and that type of thing. I mean, myself, I'm really glad that it evolved the way it did and that we were able to do a sales tax. But at the, at the first of the year, we didn't know that until we went to, through the legislature and got that money that way.
Well, and that was the thing is representative ship stood up in one of those meetings and offered to open a bill file to make that possible. And everybody that was there was good with that. And representative ship did exactly what he promised that, that he would do. And, you know, we weren't able to get it through on that particular bill. But there was another bill that was already in place in, in front of the Senate that we were able to make work. And it did exactly what the taxpayers that were in attendance at those meetings asked us to do. And it's, in the long run, it's going to be really a blessing to the community. Our county is growing. Our county is growing at a huge rate. I mean, Cedar City has already approved 5,040 new housing units to go into Cedar City. That's a growth, just to Cedar City of approximately 20,000 people. You know, that doesn't include what the county has approved. It doesn't include what Eneka or Perwin has approved or Bryanhead. You know, personally, I think that within the next five or seven years, the county population is probably going to double at the rate of growth that we're currently seeing. And if you don't think we need a new jail to deal with that incoming population, you better think again. We have to have it. And with everything that's going to be taking place with, with ICE getting on board to try to deport illegal entries and whatnot, those are things that there's only one place for them to take them initially, whether it's a 72-hour hold or whatever.
Are we gonna be, I mean, in the past, in the past, you sheriff, you've said we, we will only do state and federal inmates. But are you gonna be forced to deal with ICE?
This is on a, this is on a 72-hour hold, which is different.
You have to, you have to take them.
They'll have to take them.
We have to take them. On, on the initial rest, we have to take them. As far as what we're, what we've been, what I've always talked about in the past is long-term.
Okay.
A long-term holding. However, I will tell you this, and this has been part of my discussion with, with Marshal Martinez. And Shalon doesn't know this yet.
Oh.
But, but it appears that ICE has found kind of a loophole to work around because what, what the issue is, is ICE's long-term housing requirements are much higher than the states or the US Marshals. And I, I actually had this discussion with Secretary Mayorkas back in August and asked him why that was. And he said it was because of the number of lawsuits that they receive against him. And he told me that they have a federal prison in California that he has 14 inmates in it. And the rest of the prison is completely empty. But because of lawsuits against ICE, they haven't been able to put any more inmates in that, in that federal facility. That's a problem. That's a huge problem. So now what's happening is ICE is, has their 72-hour retainer. They go be for a federal magistrate and they ask the federal magistrate that that inmate be turned over to the US Marshals Office to be, to be detained and housed long-term rather than ICE. And it then puts ICE inmates in the jurisdiction of the US Marshals Office. And, you know, puts it back into, back into our lab. So. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Well, and the other thing that.
This new administration has got to be a relief that we're gonna do something finally.
Yeah, but it's going to, it's, it's going to be a big burden on, on local law enforcement, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
You know, I was, I was in Boston International Association Chiefs Police Conference and at the time I was sitting on the executive committee for IACP. And we met with Director Davis from the US Marshals Office and Director Ray from the FBI. And they both told us that their budgets are being cut by $100 million. And that if their budget's cut by that amount, that they're going to have to rely more and more and more on state and local law enforcement to do things that, that they've traditionally done.
Of course they are.
So.
It always.
And that's just, and that's just the way it is, is, you know, somebody's got to do it and.
Well, and like Marilyn said with, on social media, getting beat up on the jail, you know, I've made the comment that we can either, and maybe you could address this, we can either, you know, with, that jail was built in 1987 for four female inmates. And we've had up, had as many as, what, 40 at times?
Right.
And it's inhumane. And we can either pay, we can either pay millions in civil rights lawsuits now or, and then build a jail, or we can just build a jail. And so could you address that?
Yeah, and, and that's, that's the fact of the matter is, you know, and I read some of those comments where they said that they didn't care about the conditions of the jail for the inmate. Well, they may not, but there's this little thing called the ACLU that does. And the ACLU has a lot of money and they have a lot of lawyers. And they love nothing more than to bring lawsuits for, for human rights violations. And so we have to make sure that we're maintaining a specified standard in order to avoid getting sued to death. And, you know, if you, if you look back on why our current jail was built, was just because of such a thing. It was because of a lawsuit that went to the Utah Supreme Court. And the Utah Supreme Court said, build a new jail. And quite frankly, that's what we were trying to avoid. We were trying to avoid having to be ordered by the Utah Supreme Court to build a new facility. But that's where we were headed. And, you know, because of the diligence and the hard work of the commission and representative ship and a lot of other people, we're moving forward in a very positive direction. And it's going to meet the needs for, you know, a long, long time. And one of the things that's, that's nice is not only will it immediately meet the needs, but it will also, it gives us the flexibility of building a third pot if we ever get to that point that point in the county where we have to, which will ultimately save a lot of money in in reconstruction. And, you know, we've we've looked at this very, very diligently, very, very closely. We've included all kinds of people from, you know, SUU did feasibility studies for us, you know, we had individual or individual selection team of contractors and and experts in the field that didn't have anybody from the government on it that chose who the best contractor and and architect was. I mean, we've worked closely with them for the last really several years in order to make sure that we get this right, you know, and it's it's been one of the most difficult things that I've ever done in my life, and I've done a lot of difficult things in my life. This was has been a challenge, but it's the right thing. It's the right thing, and it's something that the the county absolutely needs. And it doesn't make any difference whether people want to say that that we don't need it. They don't know, because they haven't opened their eyes to the facts of what's taking place. But the fact of the matter is, is we do have to have it. We need to avoid lawsuits. We need to protect the community. If somebody goes through the judicial system and is ordered to spend time in jail, then we need to have a bed space for them, and that's the bottom line. And right now, we don't. So, you know, we need to to make sure that we're we're doing the things that that we're required to do by the Constitution, and that's what we're doing.
Well, and those that want to, John, we have all that on the website, right? All the recorded meetings we've held. I don't know how many hours worth of meetings we've held, public hearings, but it's, I don't know if it's pushing 20. I don't know, but it's a lot.
Information is staggering.
Those that want to go back.
Very, very informative. I I would suggest to anybody that hasn't listened to those meetings to listen to them because there's a lot of great information on those meetings. Another thing I'd like to say is we visited a lot of facilities.
We did.
Over that couple of years when I first came on board, and it was interesting and very informative to be able to see those other facilities in those other counties and see how they operate, and it was totally different than what ours was. So it's just so much more efficient and effective than than an old design like ours is.
Well, and when you talk about that, you look at Purgatory down in Washington County, I think they bought that facility 14 or 15 years ago, and and they've been adding on every single year.
Every single year.
Every single year they've been adding on, and so it's not a master-planned facility, so it's created some challenges. I've talked to the commissioners down there, it's created challenges with the logistics of of meals and laundry and and patrol and and.
They're different buildings, so they have to take golf carts to take their food to the other buildings.
Facility is is designed as a master-planned unit. Yes, it's expensive, but it's designed where we can grow into it, so.
And it saves us money in the long term because it makes the most efficient use of deputy-to-inmate ratio. When you look at Washington County, Washington County, man, they they choked when they did theirs. I mean, they, when they when they first built it, they knew it was too small, and and they kept going back year after year for the first three years just to get what they originally needed to begin with, and then it's never stopped. And they literally, including this year, have gone back every single year for the last like 13 or 14 years to add on. And so when you look at their jail, they have completely different buildings, which maximizes the number of deputies that you have to have in order to to be able to secure them. They have areas where they had to put in posts in the passageways because they had blind spots that weren't covered by cameras and whatnot that they weren't able to see around, that were danger points. You know, there were, there were a lot of problems with the way Washington County did theirs, and they're going to be living with it forever because they're they just keep building on, keep building on, keep building on, and it's becoming more and more deputy-intensive as they do it. So, you know, this this facility maximizes the the number of inmates per deputy. It it saves us money in the long run because it was thought out and designed very thoughtfully and thoroughly, and it's, there's a huge difference between what we're doing and what Washington County did.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you for all you do. Yep.
And that went long, but appreciate going through that.
I thought that was good, yeah.
We'll go to commission reports. Commissioner Wood?
Um, I'll kind of hurry because we don't have too much time, but I went to on the 13th, 14th, and 15th, I had a couple of different, the Public Lands Council had a meeting over in Bryce for ranchers and farmers that, talking about our issues and and different things. And then also, UAC had a conference over there for all the commissioners. We went through a lot of different things, but a lot of it was on the lawsuit that the that the state has brought against the federal government with about the public lands, and we talked a lot about that. Predator control, we talked about intensive grazing, really a good conference. Uh, let's see, let me brush. We had a local rancher out on Fifth on Lund Highway that had some animals hit. The animals got out, and they were some bucks, they were sheep, and they broke some wires to get out, and then there was another field that they got into, but the gate was open in that field, which, who would have known, got out on the highway and 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 hit a truck hit them. Killed three at the time, and then they tried to save the other three, but they all died, six, six of them were killed. You know, as we grow, we're going to continue to have these kind of issues with the livestock because livestock, as we all know, will get out of it sometime, you know, either they'll jump a fence or they'll break a wire or whatever. And I just, I just would ask that that the residents watch out for them and and, you know, be aware of your surroundings so because especially out in the valley areas, there there are a lot of livestock. I'll let that be hit.
Okay, thank you. I'll be brief. I've got a list, but I'll shorten it up. I talked about the receiving center, wanted to cover that, and we discussed that. We interviewed this week for a new public defender in Iron County. There's some changes going on there. We interviewed a great, great candidate there. We canvassed the election, you may have mentioned that. We had our Behavior Health and Steering Committee meetings this last, these last two weeks, and so that's, I'll just.
Oh, I have one, one thing I want.
Go ahead, because that's all I'm going to.
About the canvas. So it was 80, what was it, 80? 88%, but it was only like 30,000 people. Was that right? So it was just the people that were registered, and there's about 60,000 in the county.
Yeah, percentage is based on number of registered voters.
Registered voters, but that was still very high.
Yeah.
But still, there probably are people not registered, right? Yeah, I just wanted to bring that.
Vote.utah.gov.
Yep.
Okay, very good. We'll, we'll take about a 10-minute break and resume this meeting at 10 after. Thank you.
All right, we'd like to welcome everybody back and those that have joined us, we appreciate you coming today for our County Commission meeting. We'll go to agenda item number one, which is a public hearing regarding the 2025 proposed final budget. And we'll have Lucas Little, our auditor, review that first, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, we'll, we'll go through a little bit of a presentation, just kind of highlighting some parts of the budget. There are a lot of different departments and a lot of, a lot of things included in the budget. So we'll cover kind of the main points and then have the public hearing after that.
This is online too, right? It will be.
It's on right now.
It's on right now, so they'll be able to.
And I'm just, we can't see the room, we're seeing the screen.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you go to the next slide, okay, perfect. So first, I want to look back at 2024, the current year that we're in. And the reason I mentioned some of these economic factors is because some of the county revenue fluctuates based on how the economy is doing. Inflation, inflation was a lot lower over the last year compared to previous years. It's been pretty steady the last year compared to what it was, and there is a graph on that that we'll show next. Utah unemployment rate has remained low, it is below the national average. And as a county, we have seen a lot of applicants for some positions, which has been good. And then with the low unemployment rate, we have had a hard time finding people for other certain positions. So it's kind of been a mix there. Interest rates have stayed pretty level over the last year after they significantly increased in 2023. And with the interest rates being high, it has helped us earn more interest revenue, but has been difficult for parts of the economy. In 2024, there was no county tax increase, so that is the county itself had no property tax increase. There is a proposed increase for 2025 that will be voted on later today. The general fund, so looking back to the end of 2023, we, we never know where we're at at this point in the year. Cause we have some invoices and payments that come even into the next year. But we ended 2023 with an increase in our, in our general fund balance, which was good to see. And then in our municipal services fund, we did have a decrease at the end of 2023. And I mentioned these two funds because they're our main, main two funds within the county. We do have a lot of other kind of smaller funds, but these are the two bigger ones. But with the interest rates climbing in 2023, we did receive less building permit revenue than was budgeted for in 2023. So that's a lot of the reason for the decrease in the municipal services fund, but this year has made up for it. We are already over what was budgeted for this year for building permits, and a lot of that is due to commercial projects happening in our county. Let's go to the next slide. So this shows the inflation as I talked about, this is over the last four years. And as I mentioned, over the last year, the inflation has come down from where it was before. And it's remained between two and four percent, which is, you know, a little bit more normal than, than the seven, eight percent that we had before. This does affect the cost of goods in our county, which influences our sales tax. And showing how this relates on this slide, you can see the direct relation. From 2020 to 2023, the large increases in the sales tax revenue. And then with inflation slowing over the last year, year and a half, the revenue hasn't, hasn't been as high. So we do have a few more payments to receive in 2024. This graph is projected through the end of the year, which is going to be very close to what we had budgeted. And then the green column shows what is budgeted for 2025. So with inflation slowing, it does have the direct effect, effect on our budget. And that's why next year, we don't have such a big budget increase compared to what's happened in the past. And this increase in the sales tax revenue, this is the main reason why the county hasn't, has not had to do a property tax increase in a long time. Because the sales tax revenue has helped cover a lot of the significant cost increases that the county has faced. This graph shows the federal funds rate, which, which relates to interest rates. So you can see how it was like record low, 21, 22, how it went up and then leveled out over the last year. And towards the end of this year, the last few months, the feds did cut the rate a little bit, so it did come down just a little bit. And the next slide will show how the interest, mortgage interest rates directly relate to that. Go to the next one. This will also, also affect home values. In Iron County, the average home assessed by the assessor's office was 418,000, which is about 100,000 less than the average home in Utah. And that, along with interest rates and inflation, has also been more steady over the last year. We can go to the next one. So why I talk about those is because like some of our revenue sources, specifically our recorders fees and our building permits, relate to some of those factors. So even with those rates still being pretty high, our revenue will be a little bit higher in 2024 than it was in 2023 for recorder's fees. As I mentioned, with the building permits, we did have a couple of bigger commercial projects, not necessarily related to just regular housing. But that has increased our billing permits for this year. But you can see how that dip from 2023 really affected our revenue. And with the rising inflation and low interest rates, the couple of years before that, how our revenue was a lot higher during those years. And for 20, 2025, I just wanted to mention, we have budgeted 550,000 in recorder's fees, which is going to be similar to what it was this year. And then we have budgeted 750,000 for building permits for next year. We have a few other commercial projects that are in process, so it should be higher than it was in 2023, but maybe a little bit lower than this year. Looking at outstanding debt and debt payments, the top four line items are from previous years. The new large one at the bottom is for the sheriff's complex or jail, whatever you want to call it. This bond has been issued and the payments will start in 2025. We did have a meeting the other day with our financial advisor, kind of reviewing after our bond sold and where we ended up. We did sell it about a month after the feds had cut the rate, which did help us. And then, right after it was sold, there were actually a few other bonds that the other people were doing that did not sell. Cause interest rates started coming back up, and so they are higher now than what it was when we locked in our interest rate. So it did turn out, you know, when we, when we sold it, the timing was really good. The rate is higher now, and so that would have had a, a big effect, it would have. He said it would have affected us a couple million dollars in the proceeds that would have been received. So that timing ended up, ended up working out. Next slide. So looking at our capital expenditures next year, the biggest one that we just talked about with the sheriff's complex, the construction is underway. As the sheriff mentioned, and that started a few months ago and will continue over the next couple of years. With the road department, they're replacing some of their equipment this year. We did receive some extra funding from the state and some through sales tax, which has significantly helped the road department. And then they also talked about and are proposing to invest in a crusher, which will save the money in the long run from paying someone else to do the crushing. So that's also included in the budget for next year. The tourism department, they receive money through, through tourism, sales tax funding. And they are proposing to invest 100,000 in some of the parks in the county. Those parks include Three Peaks, Wood Ranch, and the Five Mile. And then lastly, the jail is requesting a skid steer for the inmate work crew. And they do a lot of work with the road department in building fences. You know, when they do construction on roads, take down the fences, they go and rebuild those fences. And half of that funding will come from the general fund and then half from the road department for the skid steer. In our landfill, so we have two separate funds within the landfill. One is the actual landfill where people go and take their, take their trash. And then the next one is the collection, so the trucks that go out and pick up the trash out in the county. They are proposing a one-time transfer from the landfill fund to the collections fund of 450,000. And this is to purchase a frontload truck. And let's see if Bruce is here, there he is, he's going to talk a little bit about this as well.
So, thank you commissioners, appreciate you letting me come. Um, this is just a one-time transfer, is what we've got on the west end of the desert, is the big cans. We have, they're, they're one at a time, they're typically three tons, two or three tons. And we're just trying to make that more efficient by hauling 12 tons at one time instead of hauling a can out, bringing it back and going back again. We're just trying to make it more efficient. It looks big on the front end, half a million dollars is, is big, it's big to me. But Jeremy has done the, done the ROI, and he's thinking three to four years we'll have this paid for and be able to, to, we just got to get more efficient, that's all, that's, that's what this is. And the one-time transfer would really help us get into this truck. Part of that half million dollars that's there doesn't reflect the sales of, of a couple of trucks we would be able to sell. It's hard to decide what those are actually worth, but it'd be a hundred thousand dollars, we're hoping, and a few cans. Any questions? Thank you. Thanks, please.
Okay, so, and those are both enterprise funds, just for reference there. Okay, salaried wages, just to look back and give an overview of the stepping grade that was implemented. So in July of 2022 is when that was decided and all employees are assigned to a grade within the stepping grade. Since that was done mid-year, we're on a calendar year budget. There was no COLA or STEP in 2023. So once that started in July 2022, and then the first step occurred in January of 2024. So 2025 will be the second step that occurs since that was implemented. Each step is a one and a half percent increase, and the COLA that is being proposed this year is one percent. Going on to the bottom line, there were many departments that had proposed a change to their administrative assistants or secretaries. They don't like me calling it secretaries, but, so I'll probably get in trouble for that, but. So all of those kind of, those positions, we, we looked at changing them countywide instead of picking and choosing which departments to change them in, making it countywide, so it's more fair and all the departments are kind of on the same, same scale.
About the increase in the medical.
Yeah, yeah, I'll talk about that too. So proposing that, it is being proposed that we have an admin one, an admin two, and an admin three position in each department that this would apply to. So it is the same throughout the county. The admin one would start at grade three, where currently most of them are at grade two. What it was, we have some part-time and also some seasonal positions, and they are at grade one or two as well. So it was felt like anyone that was full-time should be a grade above those positions. So that's where the grade three comes in. And then an admin two would go to a grade four, and admin three would be at a grade five. And they can be eligible for admin two after four years of service, plus meeting any requirements within the department's job description. And then admin three is eligible after eight years, plus any job description requirements. The HR department will be working with each department to come up with those requirements. And then for 2025, all admin positions will be moved up to be at a minimum of grade three. And then in 2026, if they qualify for an admin two or three position, then they can move, be moved in 2026. So we're not having a huge change all in one year. It'll just be changed one grade this year, and then anyone who qualifies would be in 26.
Which is one and a half percent, right?
Yes.
From one grade to the next. Is that right?
That, no, it is.
Oh, it's more than that.
The grade changes are five percent.
That's just the years or one and a half.
Step is the one and a half percent. Right. Okay, next slide. So along with salaried wages, job position changes, we met with all of the departments. We have, I don't know, around 30 departments in the county. We did have 33 new position requests for a new hire or moving employees from part-time to full-time. Obviously, that's a huge request and, you know, would take a lot of funding. The county is growing, so we had to prioritize what positions would be added. After reviewing those, this is a list of the ones that will be added. One IT GIS position, changing the part-time maintenance position to full-time.
Can I talk about that real quick?
Yeah.
So one of my responsibilities is the assessor's office, and we do have a GIS position filled now. But this individual is very talented at creating efficiencies in other departments, and he's been so busy helping other departments. And, and his, his position is like, for instance, the assessor's office have delayed having to hire with the growth of our county, having, having delayed having to hire new people because some of the things he's created, some of the efficiencies with software, different things. And so that's one reason we're adding another position is to kind of actually backfill his, with him helping a lot of the other county, or the departments with, with, with issues they have, so.
Yep. Okay, um, the third one down is one administrative sergeant in the jail. Change the crime scene investigative position from part-time to full-time. Next, change the animal shelter position from part-time to full-time. One patrol or task force deputy, the sheriff's office will evaluate that and assign as needed. Three new employees in the road department. Add a part-time position for the aging council, and then add assistant mechanic position for the fleet.
The road department has had the same 20 guys for over 20 years. And now that we have this other monies from the state, that's the reason why we're able to bump them up a little bit. And I hope that that helps with our maintenance on our road department, cause they're running like crazy.
So overall, there were three positions from part-time going to full-time, one new part-time, and then seven new full-time. Okay, so next slide. Looking at other significant impacts on our budget this year. We were making a payment back from the CJC for a VOCA grant. That was last year, we had talked about that last year. And they ended up letting us spread that payment back over three years. So we paid some of it this year. Part of that will be paid in 2025, and then part of that in 2026.
Luke, could you just explain the acronyms there, do you want me to? Just because that's, we live in acronyms and.
So the CJC is the Children's Justice Center. So they were audited on one of their grants that is through, that's a federal grant. This was a couple of years ago, when the previous director was here, they found some things that were not approved through the grant. So we have to pay back some of that money. Yeah, is that, anything you want to add? Good.
The VOCA grant comes from federal money, right?
Yes.
Victims of crime, and, 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 yeah, that's what pays for the CJC, or much of the CJC. And so that was, that was the reason for that, is there was.
It's kind of just a pass-through for the county to take care of that.
Right. So the next thing, we have an agreement with the city fire departments to cover part of the county that surrounds each city. So like Parwan covers part of the county, Paragona, Cedar City.
Canaryville.
Yeah, so, so they'll cover part of the, the county residence or that area in the county, and we'll pay them for fire. So we do have a pretty significant increase, our cost with Cedar City is increasing about 100,000. The majority of this increase is with the state, so we have state fire that we have an agreement with as well. And their increase is about 350,000 for the participation commitment match. And this is a state program, program that we pay into that covers wildland fires in our county. They had a new calculation adjustment that we, we received just last week, so it was kind of a late addition into the budget. The good part is with this is we can use in-kind match for anything we do with fire mitigation, preparation, or prevention. So if we mow weeds, or, or brush, or educating the public, these things and many other things we can reduce, we can use to reduce the actual dollar amount we pay into this program. So we take a rate, you know, for mowing the weeds, and then we can take it off this amount we actually pay.
Where we got the excavator with the bull hog on the front, so that we can make fire breaks, that kind of thing.
Yep, and so all that, all that work does help, I mean, overall, this is a big increase. But our, our fire guy, we just got a new one, Spencer Rollo, who will be over that. Ryan Riddle was a previous guy in that position. And he did a great job of, you know, maximizing our in-kind contributions to reduce the amount we had to pay. So we'll continue to work on that. And then lastly, the insurance increase was around 500,000 this year. When HR found out about this, they weren't totally shocked, they believed that it would have been increased significantly this year. Um, when HR found out about this, they weren't totally shocked, they believed that it would have been, uh, increased significantly this year because we had been able to keep the increase minimal over the last few years. But we were hoping it wouldn't have been quite as high as it was. Uh, this increase has a large impact on the two thousand and twenty-five budget. Uh, HR was proposing a higher cost of living adjustment increase. Uh, this insurance basically took up what could have been a two percent larger increase. So instead of doing a three percent cost of living adjustment, which is what HR was recommending, only a one percent cost of living adjustment has been included in the budget. And we did reach out to other insurance companies, uh, getting quotes on this, and this was still the best one that, that we could find, so.
A lot of the other businesses, hospital and that type of thing, their increase is just like everything that's gone up with the inflation the last two or three years. And, um, so they, they pass that on to their employees, which we just didn't give them as much raise. The two percent will go for, uh, which I think, I think probably most of them will appreciate that, because I would definitely rather not have to pay that, but...
Get us, yeah, either way, yeah, either way, it kind of will wash out on their paycheck, whether
Right.
charge them more for insurance and give a bigger raise, or, you know, pay the insurance and give a smaller raise. Um, we do, I also want to mention about that, we do have an insurance committee made up, made up of employees in the county. Um, so they met and discussed this, and they proposed that we keep the benefits, um, and how they are instead of charging employees more for the insurance. Um, so that just used up part of the cost of living increase, um, by doing that. Okay, next slide. Okay, this was something I received, our treasurer actually sent it to me a week or two ago. Um, this is from the Utah Taxpayers Association, so they advocate for all the taxpayers, all the citizens on paying less taxes. Uh, they did this study, and it showed the best five counties to live in, um, by county government revenue per capita. So as you can see, we are the second lowest, um, in the state, um, of the effect that county taxes has on citizens. So I, like I said, we just got that a few weeks ago, and thought that was really...
Luke, I haven't seen this before, but
I haven't either.
What really stands out to me is, three of those on the other side are our neighboring counties, Garfield, Kane, Beaver.
And they're smaller counties with smaller revenue, and so that, it is harder to run those counties by, because it is, is a lot. I know that they have a lot of needs for search and rescue and all of that kind of stuff, and they just don't have the, a lot of revenue, so they have to charge a lot of taxes and...
Well, and like, for instance, Garfield is ninety-six percent of their land is federally owned.
Yeah, so they don't get the tax.
And Kane, I think, is high as well. I'm not sure what the percentage is compared to, what's iron, about sixty?
Sixty-four, I think.
Or five percent. So...
Yeah, so, like it says at the bottom, the average, uh, statewide is one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, uh, per capita in taxes and fees, and Iron County is five hundred dollars.
Some of the other counties below us, they are bigger counties, so all of them are bigger than we are, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's, that's all I have on the budget. Any questions or any other comments for the public hearing?
I've, I'd just say that it's, it's been, it's been challenging with this inflation, because all of us know what our home budgets are, and government runs the same way. I mean, we, you know, gas prices go up, you know, um, you know, wages, everything else. It's, it's been challenging, wouldn't you say, Paul?
Extremely.
A lot more than your time before.
Okay.
All right, Chair will declare the public hearing open. If you'd like to, uh, talk about the, 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 uh, two thousand and twenty-five proposed financial budget, um, please approach the microphone and state your name, and, and, uh, we'll open the hearing. Seeing, oh, okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Robert Comstock. I, on this chart over here, it says that Iron County collects from taxes and fees eleven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. My, uh, property tax bill has gone up about thirty percent over the last three years. Now, I know you guys, on some of the last meetings, you've said, well, it's a small percentage in these areas, but probably for myself, and for everybody behind me, and probably you guys, too, I look at my total bill, and my total bill's gone up three, four hundred times. I understand everything's going up, I get that. But for me, I'm retired, I just got a four hundred and seventy-five dollar gre, uh, decrease in my social security and pension. It's not going up, and hopefully, hopefully, things are gonna get better under Trump. I think everybody behind me would agree that, to that. But, uh, I don't have a problem with one or two percent increase in pay raises. I don't know what the grades mean, I don't know what, uh, the percentages are, the term, in terms of how much money we're talking about. But I guess my biggest problem is that they just, Lucas Little said, "We haven't had a property tax increase in a long time." Well, that's not true. Uh, Paul, you were at the last meeting at the Heritage Center, you probably voted in the thirty-six dollar levy fee, right? Probably did.
We, uh, we haven't, we voted on that today.
We voted.
Okay, that's not a lot of money, but just recently, we, uh, we were at a tax meeting, Tax and Truth meeting, and I think they voted two hundred and twenty-nine dollar increase for the school levy. So I don't know how we can say we haven't had any increases in a long time, that's gonna be...
We're talking about county.
Okay, isn't that Iron County?
The county collects all the taxes, but there's different, any, there's different taxing bodies or entities within that. We, we're, the, our, the body that is convening here today is about ten percent of that total tax that you pay. Well, district is the, is the largest, and we're, we're, we're about ten percent.
I think they're sixty-five.
Five percent or so.
Again, I'm just, I'm just looking at my overall tax bill.
Sure, I get it.
There's the water, there's the Central Orange County Water Conservancy District, School District, Iron County, there's different pies that...
All the cities, all the cities, depending where you live.
Well, I live in Iron County, and, uh, I just know, I mean, last time, at the last meeting, you said, "Guys, where are we gonna make the cuts? Where, what municipality, where can we cut?" And you also said that our officers haven't had a pay increase in a long time? I don't know, I don't know where...
No, we didn't say that, because we, we had to raise them this last year.
Okay, maybe I'm wrong, you said something to the effect that we're losing officers to the highway patrol, we're making more in hourly wages. All I'm saying is that, I, I don't know, I've seen quite a bit of increase in my taxes. Mister, maybe I'm wrong, Mr. Little said that we haven't had in a long time, but, again, I'm looking at my total tax bill.
We're talking about Iron County's ten percent, that has not been raised for twenty-three years.
Okay.
Okay?
And I, I get it, the other entities have raised theirs, and centrally assessed has, has shifted a lot of those taxes onto residents rather than them.
We're facing the same kind of increases. I mean, my, my homeowners and auto just went up twenty-five, thirty-five percent across the board. And again, I look at my total tax bill, but thank you, folks, for hearing me.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming. Are there any others that would like to speak to this topic? If not, Chair Pro Tem will declare this public hearing closed, and we'll go to item number two, public hearing regarding a compensation increase for executive county officers. Lucas, you wanna talk about that?
Luke, can I do that second one first? Is that, okay.
That's the...
This one?
Nope.
Nope, the other one.
Yes. Okay, so this is a new, uh, requirement. Um, this was a bill that was introduced during the two thousand and twenty-four legislative session. Uh, so it is in Utah Code seventeen dash six dash fourteen. Um, so it's a public hearing on executive county officer compensation increase. So just to give a little bit of background on this and what it includes. So it reads, "The annual salaries of the officers of all counties in the state shall be fixed by the respective county legislative bodies, subject to requirements of this section." And what does compensation mean? So salary, including salary paid under a contract, a budgeted bonus, or a budgeted incentive pay, a vehicle allowance, or defiant, deferred salary. Um, so any increase in these items, um, is what is being discussed. You can go to the next slide. And then who is included in this? So, this is everything that the code says, there are not any specific instructions on what the, what to present for the public hearing, or if anything needs to be presented at all. Um, I did reach out to other counties to see what they were planning on doing, um, some had a list of the positions being affected. Some were just going to read a statement stating the percentage increases, and some weren't aware of this re, new requirement at all. Um, after receiving the feedback, um, I, I put some things together, but an executive county officer, uh, this is what it means, so a county manager, manager, or chief administrative officer, which we don't have. Um, or item B, the assistant county manager. Um, C, an individual who is the head or chief of a county department or division. So we do have a lot of those, uh, we do have a lot of different departments. And then an individual who is the chief assistant or deputy of an individual described above. Um, so those are, those are the positions included, and why we're having this public hearing today. So after talking to those other counties and kind of seeing what everyone was doing, I put together, uh, the following slide. So this includes all of the different departments. These are all of the officer positions that qualify. Most of these increases include a two point five percent adjustment, like the standard for other employees. So the one and a half percent STEP, and then the one percent cost of living adjustment, which equals the two and a half percent. Um, a few of these are contracted with the county, like the public defender, so they are not an employee, but paid under a contract. And then there was some speculation that this was just an increase for the commission. As the code states, this increase includes several positions. Uh, there were also questions on how much the commission salary is per year. Um, so excluding benefits, for two thousand and twenty-five, the salary for the commission will be fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-three and forty-one cents. Um, yeah. So I think that's everything, any other?
So is this just for counties, not for cities? They didn't do it?
Cities have to do it as well.
Oh, they do, okay.
They have a different code.
It's a different code, okay. I just wondered about that.
So, yeah, I was new this year for both the counties and cities, but
Yeah.
this is under a different part of the code.
So to be clear, Luke, the commissioners, um, they've, they can't, you know, we've always gotten the COLA, but we, we have not accepted a raise.
Right.
At least as long as I've been here, we have not.
And they're, they're, the stepping grade doesn't apply to us?
Right, right.
Because it's a salary.
Just the cost of living increase, that's why the, the top line, I don't know if you can zoom in on that a little, John, or not?
I can try.
But the commission increase is one percent.
Oh, I thought that, sorry, I thought that said ten percent.
No, one percent.
No, no, no.
It's really small.
It is very small.
Which just includes the cost of living, not the STEP.
Oh, yeah, there you go, but up.
And that, and that's true with all the elected positions.
Well, and, and we asked not even to bother with that, but it's hard to do it, y, y, you almost have to do it across the board, really.
Did you say fifty-eight thousand dollars? What was that turn, what was that number?
Oh, for the commission, fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-one cents. That's the commission salary.
Okay.
There were some questions on that.
Which is much smaller than the other elected officials.
And other counties.
And other counties.
So, yeah.
Public service.
All right.
Oh, yeah, I'll see if I can figure that out. Do you want that other one, Luke?
No, not right now.
All right. Uh, let me open the, so the Chair will declare the public hearing open, uh, regarding compensation increase for executive county officers. Those that'd like to speak, come to Mike and state your name.
I'm Steve Miller, I just have a question, um, regarding the commission pay. Um, I did my own research as well, and that says it's the averages, uh, let's see. Average for the commission?
That's probably with benefits.
It was fifty, fifty-five, fifty, forty-six to fifty-eight thousand. Um, but then when you go on and look it up, it says, for example, Paul Cousins in two thousand and twenty-two had ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Now, you're telling me that all medical, all that, everything is forty thousand dollars for one person? Really?
Expense.
Well, that'll include taxes, like social security, Medicare taxes.
Okay.
Of course, and that the county pays.
Okay.
So it includes that.
Luke, will you come to the microphone? Sorry.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Right, right. So, yeah, that benefits part, and now, I don't know if you saw it online, it should break it out, salary versus benefits.
The one I saw did not.
Okay, I think they break it out now, um, so you can tell better what salary versus the benefits. But the benefits includes social security, Medicare taxes, the employees pay half, the county plays half, which is, every job does that. And then, um, health, dental, vision, insurance, and...
Yeah, we have to pay for those.
So, health.
My one question.
Vision and, vision and dental.
Okay, then, we're paying a lot for all that, aren't we?
Yep.
As taxpayers, and I mean, it's insurance and stuff, so...
And that, the, the benefit package with, with anybody that works for the counties is a good benefit package.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
That was, that earlier presentation, that insurance went up a half a million dollars this year, that's, and that's part of it.
Right, and I understand the insurance part very well. The other question, and I-
You are insurance.
Yeah, I kind of played in that game. Um, the other question, I should have stood up for it, let me ask you this really quick, the CJC does, how involved is the Iron County Commission with the CJC? Do you have to approve all the bonds and, or any grants they get and stuff?
All the grants have to be approved, yeah, by the commission.
Okay, so you go back to the previous person in charge of that, that we're paying back that hundred and twenty-one thousand, but that was also approved by the commission, correct?
Yeah, there are limitations on what we can talk about, Sam, you might need to address that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing and move, we're gonna go ahead and move agenda item seven up, um, which is, um, discussion of possible action regarding the use of Iron County facilities by other persons or entities. And Stephanie, we have, we had a, and I, and I asked Martin Nelson to come, um, with the, uh, Lions Club. So, our senior center has been used often, mostly by a lot of nonprofit organizations, the Ham Radio Club, the Lions Club for the Christmas Party.
Quilt Guild.
Quilt Guild, you know, there's been some, some entities use that facility. Um, we've never really had a written policy, but we wanted to, I asked John if he'd put this on the agenda so we could have this discussion. I do know that, um, uh, there's, there's some, and there's some places in the county that does charge, I, I know that, uh, the, the fairgrounds, they charge money for weddings and, and events for the use of that facility. Um, there's a charge for the use of the Borough Community Center to help upkeep with that. Um, but we thought about talking about, uh, it, you know, standardizing a, a policy for the use of our buildings, and, and, um, so we, we might need some legal counsel here, but I, my thought was, Mark, uh, Martin Nelson called me with the Lions Club, and, and Stephanie's new in her position, and we really have never had a written policy for, at least for that facility.
Not that I can find anyways.
That you could find, and so we wanted to just talk about it. Uh, some of the, some of the discussion we've had with legal is, is to possibly, with at least nonprofits, is to at least charge a, uh, cleaning fee, maybe a five hundred dollar deposit for a cleaning fee. If a facility is, is cleaned and left the way they started, then we just refund that, that money totally. And, and so, that's one element, the other is to, uh, talk about maybe if it's not nonprofit, if we should set up some kind of policy to enact some kind of fee.
We maybe should do that throughout the county, what do you think, Sam? I think that would be... It, it's hard, because each building's kind of... It, it's hard because each building's kind of different.
Exactly, that was gonna be the, where it's unique to, uh, what Stephanie has to deal with and the different groups of people that would use it. I guess it's just a question for the commission about whether, um, we're, uh, encouraging the general public to use certain facilities over others, or, um, because some buildings are older than others and
Yeah.
uh, different costs associated with maintaining them or what have you, so.
Yeah.
Ultimately.
We ha- we have some, some office buildings, like in the visitor center that, that we use, and I don't think we charge anything for those either, which I, I love that we're able to offer those services in the county for those different people.
It might be prudent for the commission to try to implement a policy for any county buildings, uh, that just says, uh, department heads or those who run those buildings, uh, can use their discretion to set up a, a fee schedule, but it needs to be.
That's a good idea.
It needs to be something that's posted, something that, uh, the general public has access to, and then, um, what the parameters are for like a cleaning fee, um, a, a security deposit.
I think we should, um, address indemnification a little bit as well. Um, I had conversations with our Utah, the Utah Counties Indemnity Pool Friday morning after, uh, this kind of started becoming an issue. And, uh, yeah, one of the things that I talked about with Lance at USIP was that this, it's important that these buildings, which are the public's buildings, are, are available to the public for use. Um, and so I, I think it's reasonable that we regulate that to a degree. And, you know, I, I kind of had the example of, you know, what if the fair board meets versus what if somebody wants to have a knife throwing competition? I mean, are very different considerations for.
Very much so.
You know, right, you know, if somebody wants to use the senior center and have an open bar, or, you know, there's, there's
Exactly.
The very different.
Stephanie said they had, used to have birthday parties in there quite often, and somebody really had a problem, and they had a problem, so they kind of regulated that, which, yeah.
One of the things that we do at, at the Fairgrounds Building is, uh, it's required that they have, uh, an insurance policy attached to what they do. So as far as indemnification goes, John, uh, we can require that they have some insurance that will.
We're not responsible for.
And at the very least, a statement of, of indemnification, we're still, you know, it's, it's, it, it, we own the building and so.
Some kind of a release.
Yeah, it's one thing to have a slip and fall, it's another thing to have some bit of negligence on our part. There's, I mean, I, I think we need to, if we're going to do that, I would suggest being consistent countywide, recognizing that we have, you know, for-profit, or we have, we have facilities that we charge fees for, like, you know, the, the parks
Fairgrounds.
or the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
Um, and, and then I think, you know, what happens if somebody wants to use that room? And if they want to have a meeting in the afternoon, I'm like, go for it, you know? But if, but maybe we need to be a little bit more, um, you know, maybe we want to do a scheduling software, maybe we want to, you know, yeah, so I think, I think it deserves some thought.
Agreed. And certainly, um, a, a waiver, uh, would be a great first line of defense, but like I said, we could, we could have different requirements that would help make sure the county's not on the hook if something goes down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That has been my thought mainly, is that for sure. It's just making sure everybody's protected, because these parties, they're not gonna be when any staff is there.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be weekends, evenings.
So it may be a thing where you charge a little more for those type of activities for your, for your, uh, what's it called? Deposit, your deposit.
Yeah.
And, and maybe not as much for the, for the, uh, five oh one three, C threes, yeah, something like that.
So for today's purposes, I mean, um, we can develop a policy that's countywide. I don't think that's absolutely necessary, but, um, especially where we have identified certain buildings that are more sought after by the public for use than others. Um, like you said, John, it may not be an issue for us to open up this conference room to the general public, because it's A, not as sought after, and B, only used for meetings and not parties necessarily. Um, but if it becomes necessary, then we can certainly put something together for the.
Well, and, and we, we try to keep it, like, for example, with that room, my, my, uh, scheduling software con- constitutes of a, constitutes a, uh, a state bank calendar that I write somebody's name on. I mean, you know, that's, and so, uh, you know, I, I don't, I think we can try to, maybe not, maybe not make it overly complex, I think, is what you're getting at.
Right.
Right.
Well, and one thing like with the Lions, for instance, that, um, the Lions, the Quilt Guild, and the Ham Radio.
They have the Trail Blazers group as well.
Too.
I mean, the, the demographic of those entities are really the age group that uses that facility anyway, and so.
Mostly, yeah.
I don't, I mean.
Mark, you gonna sit there and take that?
Not calling you old, Mark.
Well, and here in Parala, and we actually have two nights where we host AA meetings.
Yeah.
Oh.
On Wednesday and Friday is a new one, because they outgrew the space that we had, so they needed to have a second meeting night.
Right.
So, wow.
So what's your advice, Legal? What, where do we go from here? Do we, um, I mean, the, the matter at hand is obviously Lions Club wants to have their Christmas party this year at the facility. And I think at the very least, we ought to at least implement a, that's my feeling, that we implement a cleaning fee deposit. And then maybe we work on a, and maybe, maybe we work on a policy where I like where each director of that building kind of uses their, their best judgment, and I, that's my feelings, but.
And again, the, the, the focus would just be treating people the same, you know, whatever group is coming, where, where, there's always gonna be a deposit, and if it's clean to satisfaction, you can have your deposit back or whatever.
Like that.
But whatever you decide, I would say you should empower your department heads to make those decisions, but just, uh, counsel them to, to treat people equally, so we're not, uh, having a smattering of who, who can access and who can't.
Okay. I agree.
All right. Might, it might help, Sam, if in the future, we, we, we develop a little bit of a form that could be standardized for, for, uh, for here, or the Borough Community Center, or whatever, that
Agreed.
could, could help with that.
Right.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I would, uh, move to approve, um, the use of the Iron County facilities by other people and en- entities.
Should we talk about, maybe in that motion about a, a cleaning fee and?
Yes, um, and, and each individual, uh, department head should, um, be the one that, um, decides on their cleaning fees and, and that type of thing. That good? Anything else?
Um, I.
We need a policy of something else.
Moving forward to develop a policy, maybe.
Right.
Yeah, moving forward, develop a posi- policy.
And that works, especially for today's purposes, uh, for Stephanie's instruction. She, she has the authority, if you vote to approve that motion, to implement a, a fee schedule. Um, and so.
Okay.
That's fine, you'll just want to post that as, as you're able, so.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second that. So it's been moved in second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thanks for coming, Mark.
Thank you.
Did you have anything to say? You're welcome to.
I just appreciate the, uh.
Come up, come up.
Tell us your name.
Mark Nelson. I'm with the Lions Club, but, yeah, we're, we appreciate the use of that great facility. It's, it, uh, uh, they do a wonderful job of, of decorating it and making it nice, and, and we try to leave it in better shape, or as good a shape as it was when we received it. And, uh, it's been very great to work with the good folks there and to, uh, utilize that space. We've, we've, uh, enjoyed, uh, conventions there in the past, and plus our Lions, Railroad Lions activities, and it's been very positive. And I think a cleaning fee that's, especially one that's refundable, is no problem, because, uh, that simply, I think it protects the county.
Right.
Yeah.
We appreciate all you do as Lions Club. Thank you, Mark.
You have for sure.
Thanks for sticking around, Stephanie. Appreciate that. Um, let's see, so as far as, hey, Lucas, as far as the budget, we don't, we, it's just a public hearing today, we don't vote on that today, right? So we vote on that next meeting, okay, so we don't, okay, we didn't need to vote on, on either of the one or two, okay?
Yeah, that, item number four, you will vote on.
Right, we'll vote on that one, but not the first two, got it, okay?
To the public comments.
Okay, we'll, we'll move to item number three, public comments, uh, three-minute time limit per speaker for public comment participants. Should not repeat others' comments, only for items not on the agenda. No items related to commission's role as an appeal board. Comments should be directed to the commission, no attacks on other people's character. So anybody like to speak? Seeing none, we will move to item number four, which is a resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten, adopting additional property tax revenue for twenty twenty-five calendar year.
Um, it's the one where you want me to?
Do you want?
That was the one that, yeah, Paul wanted to show that.
Okay. Which one was it? This one, right? Okay. Is that the one, Paul?
Yeah, could you, could you address that, Luke, maybe? And, and, and I would, I would appreciate you going forward to the slide and talk about the certified rate, and, and our ten percent piece of the pie, and, and how it's, how, how our rates compared to years in the past.
Yeah, yeah.
Or levy.
Yeah, so we had the public hearing on this tax increase a few weeks ago. Um, I did present this, um, just kind of showing the public how tax rates change, little explanation of how they work, um, it is kind of a confusing system. Um, but this proposed tax increase on the average home valued, and this is a primary residence, valued at four hundred and eighteen thousand, uh, property taxes would increase by thirty-five dollars and sixty cents per year, two dollars and ninety-seven cents a month, and on a business, that same value would be sixty-four dollars seventy-two per year, and five dollars and thirty-nine cents per month. Um, so this is the tax rate over the last, like, twenty years. So the last time the county did truth and taxation was in two thousand and three. That is when they increased the tax rate from where it should be for next year. So if you look, this starts in two thousand and three. As, as property values go up, tax rates go down. So if you look in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, where the property values were going way up, you can see that big dip in the tax rate, it comes down. And then after two thousand and eight, when values weren't going up as much, they started going down, the property tax rate went back up. And why that happens is because, say, the county's gonna receive a million dollars in property tax revenue, um, this year. Next year, they're gonna receive a million dollars in property tax revenue. But as values change, if the values go up, the tax rate goes down, so that million dollars of tax revenue, um, is what, what occurs. If the values go down, the tax rate will go up, so the county still gets that million dollars. So that's why it fluctuates, um, based on how values change. And the last four or five years, the tax rate's just been going down and down, because home values have gone up so much. Um, so we're at like a record low tax rate.
So it gives us the same pot of money to run the county.
Same, the same money. Uh, go to the next slide. So here's an example to hopefully better understand that. Um, so home values, let's say this is year one in, in the county. So the county's getting, say, the thousand dollars of revenue, and there's three homes in that county. Um, each home is valued different, so we have one at a hundred thousand, one at a hundred and ten thousand, and one at a hundred and twenty thousand. To figure out the tax rate, we'll take the thousand dollars of revenue needed, divided by the total value, which is three hundred and thirty thousand. So the tax rate is point three percent. So each home is gonna pay a certain amount, amount, if their value's higher, they're gonna pay a little more to come up to the thousand dollars. Now go to the next slide. For year two, let's say every home increases by five percent. So that means that the average increase countywide was five percent. Like I said, the tax rate will come down as values go up. So the tax rate was at point three, now it's at point two nine percent. And that same thousand dollars is received by the county. And also noted, each house is still paying the same exact amount, uh, because they all went up by the same average of five percent. So now in year three, let's say the first two homes go up by five percent, but the third home goes up by ten percent. So values went up overall, the average, average increase was seven, seven and a half percent. Uh, tax rate went from point two nine percent down to point two seven percent. So the tax rate's still coming down. But each homeowner is paying less. Well, the two, the two first ones are paying less money, the third one is paying more. So that still adds up to the thousand dollars of tax revenue. Since the average increase countywide was a little over seven percent, the first two only increased by five percent, so they're paying less money. The third home increased by more than the average, um, so they're paying more that year. So as, as values change each year, everyone's tax bill's gonna change. If your home goes up by two percent and the county average is five percent, you're gonna pay less that year. If your home goes up by twenty percent in value, and the average in the county was only ten percent, then you're gonna pay more, other people are gonna pay you less. Um, go to the next slide.
I didn't ever think it came down, but my house actually came down this year.
Yeah, so, so depending on how, how the values fluctuate. So this is centrally assessed properties. Um, on the, look at the chart on the right-hand side. Um, the blue is, uh, homes and businesses, uh, like local businesses. The gray is utility companies. Um, so there, there's been a shift over the last few years of property that is assessed by the state, so like airlines, utility companies, mines, sand and gravel pit, pits, uh, the railroad, basically anything that crosses state lines, and then a few other things, natural resources. They are assessed by the state, um, where our local county assessor's office assesses, uh, homes and businesses in our area. So homes, we all know, since twenty twenty, home values have gone way up. Um, the problem that's happened is these businesses that are assessed by the state, their values have not changed. They actually have come down some. So with our values going way up and their values not changing or going down, there's been a big tax shift. Um, on the left-hand side, that shows statewide. So see how the orange and blue sections have gotten bigger and bigger? That means homeowners and businesses are paying more in taxes, while all of these companies that are assessed by the state are paying a smaller portion of taxes. Uh, and that's where that tax shift has come. It's, it doesn't mean the school or the cities or the counties got more money, they've still got the same amount of money. It's just, um, us citizens are paying more while these other companies are paying less. Go to the next slide. The orange was like
Central.
Local businesses.
Oh.
So that, so that and the blue is.
The gray was centrally assessed.
The gray was the, the state assessed properties.
Railroads.
Lockdown Power, Union Pacific.
So that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they've all been paying less and less, where we've been paying more and more.
It's weirdly named, it's called personal property, but it's, it's the, it's the equipment and stuff that businesses own, that orange. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, next slide. Okay, and, and so, like I said, what's causing this shift? I, I kind of explained that already, the centrally assessed properties are paying less. So in twenty twenty-three, for example, their values, um, actually went down. Um, and the gray, you can see their values were five hundred and twenty-two, uh, million, and it went down to four hundred and eighty, or four thirty, whatever that is.
They have lots of lawyers and lobbyists that go to the Capitol and lobby for less taxes.
So in, in that year alone, they paid one point six seven million less in property taxes, which was shifted to homeowners in that one year. And that's been going on for the last few years. Hopefully, it's kind of got to its max where it's not gonna shift anymore. Um, go one more slide, John. So the, this is a little bit better graph to look at. Um, the big red part is residential homeowners. Um, that's in twenty thirteen versus twenty twenty-two. So you can see they paid fifty-four percent of the total property taxes. So say property taxes were a million dollars, homeowners were paying five hundred and forty thousand of that total tax, and now they're paying sixty-seven percent of the total taxes. And those other, um, the green is the state assessed properties.
Yeah, it's cut in half.
Yep, they were paying twelve percent of our total taxes, now they're only paying six percent of total taxes. So when people say, like the other guy that was here, he said, well, my property tax bill's gone up, you know, over the last few years. Yeah, most homeowners have, because our values have gone up so much, whereas the state, state assessed businesses values have. Whereas the state, state assessed businesses values have gone down or stayed the same. Um, so that's made us pay more than pay less. That, all the entities are still getting the same amount of money. Um, unless they do a tax increase like we're doing this year. But it was, been since two thousand and three, the county last did a truth and taxation. Um, so yeah, that, hope that explains part of the shift and.
Luke, could you also talk about, and I don't understand it super well, but there was a time, there was like a five-year window where the state implemented a property tax. And they didn't do the, they didn't do the certified where it goes up and down, they locked it in.
Yeah, so.
Those five years when property values really shot up, the state stayed locked in and the state took a lot of, they, they took a lot of money, money in on that, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so that, it's a small portion of your tax bill, but still they, so they froze the rate, the legislature for like five years, the part that goes to the state. And so as values were going up and up, the tax rate should have been going down, down. But it, their rate was locked in to stay the same. So with the higher values, they were collecting a lot more money. So that was one thing that affected, I think that just ended this year, but yeah.
Okay, thank you for that.
And Luke, that, that didn't represent a tax shift, it just basically took more money out of.
Yes.
People's, because it wasn't that, uh, was that state, um, education?
Assessing, collecting.
State assessing and collecting.
I think that's the last slide, is it?
It is.
It is.
So on this, I'd like to just, you know, um, I've, I've been involved in private business for thirty-eight years. I sold my company six years ago, but it's, it's been crazy with the inflationary pressures we've had on businesses. Um, when a business has increased labor and material costs, we have to raise our prices. That's all there's to it. And, and, and the county is a business, we're running a business. And, uh, and the same thing is true with the county, but, uh, there's a lot of counties that have truth and taxation every single year, where it's on their agenda every year, they, they raise their taxes every year based on inflationary costs. Well, Iron County hasn't done that for twenty-three years. And, uh, which is probably shame on the commissioners, including me, because I've been in for six years, but she, probably shame on the commissioners for twenty-three years not. And nobody wants to raise taxes. We hate it, it's just like everybody else. We, and no, nobody wants to do this, but, but, uh, the, the ten percent levy that we collect in Iron County, uh, we're raising that twenty percent and half of that was gobbled up by, by the insurance increase and the other half was in, gobbled up by some medical expenses of the jail. And so, so it's, it's, it's just.
Thing we did raise it just because of those extra costs.
So, but, but it's a, it's, it's basically about a twenty percent increase on the ten percent we get. This body, not, not the school district, not the water district, not the other entities, but ten percent we're raising and it's about a two percent increase overall countywide on, on property taxes. But that's, um, and so, um.
We already had our, we, we had our, um, public hearing, but.
Friday afternoon at dinnertime.
Well, we, we'll defend that because sir, we have to, we cannot hold that meeting when there's any other public meeting being held.
And all through the week, there's other public meetings in the county.
There's city councils, there's, there's all kinds of other public meetings, school district, board meetings.
We had to do it within a window. When you do it, it has to be within a window, so it had to be in this time. The room had to be available. There was a lot of reasons, we didn't do that maliciously at all. I, I just have to say.
Well, that's what we were accused of, but we're accused of a lot of things.
And it has to be after six P M. So state law, we have to do that for six P M, that public hearing. If we would have done it at eight o'clock, I'm sure people would have said it would have been too late.
It, it's.
My problem was with the assessment. My house was raised three hundred thousand dollars in one year as to assessed market value.
So I think they're only assessed every five years, is that?
Yeah, but did you, uh?
Did, did?
Yeah, did you, did you get a chance to?
Yeah. Did you, did you appeal it?
I did.
And did they take some off?
Some off.
Okay, very good.
My home went up three.
That's a good, a good example of, you know, if you feel like it's unfair, definitely come and, and appeal it.
Mine went up three hundred thousand too, and I did not appeal it. And I'm not saying you shouldn't have, I'm just saying that mine went up too, because they, they assess those every five years. And, and my house was probably low for a few years and it, it took about.
You got away with not as much.
And then, so I just licked my wounds and paid the tax, so. Yep, it is. So, but, but if, if there's anybody, and, and like I said, we've had our public hearing, if there's anybody like to speak to this, I'll allow it, uh, as, as chair pro tem, if anybody'd like to say anything.
I will say, I've been getting complaints, um, online, they can't hear the cross talk in the room, so you gotta come to the mic.
If there's anybody who would like to speak to this, you're, uh, you're welcome to.
You're welcome to come up.
Come up. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move for the approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten, adopting additional property tax revenue for two thousand and twenty-five calendar year.
I'll second that. So it's been moved in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Number five, review and, and possible approval of the sewer line agreement amendment. Sam left.
He was in here.
I'm left. Let's go on and then come back to it.
Back to that one. Let's go to six, discussion with the enterprise in Iron.
I don't see Tyce either.
Tyce isn't here either, so.
Well, that's right.
He scheduled it.
He did last time. We'll get him, we'll get him.
Oh, well, okay, that will.
Maybe.
Maybe we could have Jennifer. Jen, Jennifer probably all here.
So we'll.
Trying to yell at her and bring in.
Running over to talk to her.
What's that? Are the, is he here, Tyce?
Terry just went to get Jennifer.
Terry's getting Jennifer.
Oh, okay. Oh, there's Sam. Sam, we'll go back to you, uh, we've got to talk about this, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Number five, review and possible approval of sewer line agreement amendment.
So we already put that through city council. We were making some clarifications about allocations, uh, you're probably aware.
For just a second.
Probably aware we, uh, have two thousand connections that we can designate for that specific line. Did I put it in there? It's specifically for the.
Sam, could you speak into the mic, sorry?
It's specifically for the forty-five hundred west transmission line.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so again, just making some clarifications, no substantive changes, uh, but we ran it through city council, it was approved and now it's in front of you guys.
Oh.
Sam, could you, could you take a step back and give us the thirty thousand foot picture of what you're talking about? You, you were talking about fine details, but.
It's the industrial park, isn't it? Isn't it the inland port?
Forty-five hundred west transmission line for the sewer line is owned by the city. We have two thousand connections on it, that's the transmission line that runs by B Z I.
Yep.
Uh, that new inland port area. And, um, in order for them to move forward, they needed some clarification for, um, their documentation. So what we've done is essentially, we took our original sewer agreement and we just fine tuned a couple of things saying that if it's not, uh, been designated by the county at a certain time and the agreement expires, then those connections are essentially lost. We talked in the city council meeting, uh, that our intent would probably be just to renew the agreement rather than let it expire in the next ten years here.
Yeah, we don't want to lose those.
Right, no. And obviously things may change as development occurs, but, uh, for now, the agreement is in place. Um, it specified when connections, uh, should be granted and that the county has an obligation to notify the city, uh, when those connections are granted. Uh, and again, that's all, uh, pretty standard for what our current agreement is, but just clarifying. It was occurring in practice, but needed clarification in writing, uh, so that we could move forward. Any other questions?
No, I think so.
I'm saying a lot of general things, but.
Yeah, that's good.
If you don't read the sewer agreement, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Ready for a motion?
Yep.
I would move for approval of the sewer line agreement amendment.
I'll second that. Uh, it's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. And, uh, we'll just catch Tyce next time.
It looks like.
Go to.
He'll come back.
He'll, he'll, he'll come another time.
And I, before we go to personnel, I'm going to take a, and I don't, I'm, I'm going to take a minute, a personal privilege and just address kind of what you were saying about the meeting time. People unfortunately, and I think maybe that's human nature, we think the worst, right? Sometimes, and that's, and, and sometimes I'm guilty of that too, but we, we were, you know, with meeting times and the, and the things that we're, um, you know, have to do in this job, um, you know, we're, we're not, we're trying to do the best we can, we're not trying to be nefarious or be sneaky. I mean, just to give you an example, uh, during the five-hour truth and taxation hearing we had for the jail, um, it was freezing cold in that room. It was, it was freezing cold and people, several got up and said, did you guys turn the air conditioner down so low that you'd freeze everybody out and drive them off and, and?
Was you there?
Was you there?
It was freezing, I was freezing.
Override all the controls and I, and I went like six times and tried.
Between speakers, I picked up my cell phone and, and called the manager of the building and said, hey, could you turn off the air conditioner?
And then what happened?
And I was ripped for being rude during the meeting for using my, and I was on my cell phone.
Trying to fix the problem.
And I was trying to fix the problem, so sometimes these positions are a little bit difficult sometimes and you, sometimes you just can't win, so anyway.
Yes.
It does.
And I, and I understand that. I had somebody ask if we took bribes and I'm like, I don't know how we would even do that. But, but no, and, and we try to be as transparent as we can. It's a hard job. That's why I didn't run again, I'll tell you that right now. It, it's a hard job and I, I really enjoyed a lot of it. The people in the county are wonderful. They really are and they do their job and they do a great job. But it's hard. It's a hard job. Paul always says, when anybody says anything, he always says, well, you run, you run and see if, how hard it is and it is a hard job.
All right, thank you, Jennifer, you're up.
All right, in the Utah State University Extension Office, Taren Schroder was selected from the most recent recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant full-time U S U Extension Office Administrative Assistant, position effective eleven twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-four. And that's all I have.
Wow, that's about the shortest.
I know.
Ow.
Surprising.
I would move to approve the personnel as outlined by Jennifer.
I'll second that, it's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, appreciate it.
While you're signing that, I don't know of any, uh, non-delegated, but I, I did wanted to report back that, uh, um, a cute couple bought the C J C property and they had to, they had to put a bathtub, they had to put a bathtub in it to get it, their loan. But they did that and, and, and we closed and it should fund today and so.
Nice.
Be, I, I'm really excited for them, so.
Brand new couple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be a good home for them.
And that'll go back, the, the proceeds of that'll go back to pay for the asphalt in parking lot and curb and gutter for the C J, new C J C that was, was built, so.
Terrific.
So which will be really nice there.
Seemed like it was pretty close to the same amount, Luke? Yeah, that's awesome.
Pretty close.
So it's, and we appreciate it, I mean, that building was initially donated by, by who?
Hospital, I think, the hospital.
And so thank you to I H C for that and that helped us out.
Allowed us to go ahead and sell that and.
We, we learned that that, that was a building that had been moved, like happened in the early seventies, um, onto the new foundation. It was, uh, I don't know, it's a good, a good process, thank you.
Do you want, do you have any report for the, and it's not on the agenda, so I don't know if it's appropriate, but for your U S, U S E P meeting, John?
Oh, um.
That you would like to report on there?
I, um, I didn't bring my notes, but I'll, I'll, I'll speak to that a bit.
And U S E P is.
The Utah County's indemnity pool.
That's our insurance.
Insurance for the counties.
Our liability insurance and, and I appreciate you, I hadn't thought to put that on here, but, um, anyway, uh, the Utah County's indemnity pool is a pool of, I'm speaking to mainly employees here and Bruce, hi Bruce. Um, but it's, it is our liability, um, insurance, um, and the insurance market has been interesting, um, and, uh, very, very rough the last few years. And we have greatly benefited by being a member of U S E P. Iron County's been a member of U S E P since the beginning, it's about thirty years now. Some of those original folks are finally, starting to retire. Um, we had Sonya White retire, Johnny's, I don't know how long he's going to hang on. Um, but he gave a presentation about, uh, the market in general and, uh, some of the real challenges. Um, for example, um, indemnifying, uh, you know, police officers in their, in their line of duty. It's almost impossible in the open market now. Many, many departments just don't have liability coverage and, and we're, we're fortunate that we, we still do. Um, one of the biggest costs that U S E P has is they insure the first bit of a loss if we have a claim. Um, but then after that, there's, it's what they call the reinsurance market. And, um, and that reinsurance market has gotten ever more expensive. And, and we have things that we didn't have before. We have, uh, cyber, which is really expensive. Um, we have, um, one of the things that they got dinged on was if we build a new building, they would just kind of let us catch up with it the next cycle. We, we go through, um, our affirmation every, uh, March, April, May. And we, we say, we have these many employees and Jen does that and we have, you know, fleet that tells them how many vehicles and which vehicles and what have we sold and what have we gained? And, and then we go through the buildings and appraisals and all that. And so one of the things that they will do from now on is we have to report when that building got the C O B O. And then we have, we'll actually get billed from that point forward rather than kind of let us catch up.
All they backcharge.
Cause they, they, they were fine with it, but they, they were getting dinged on their audit because of it, because it was a little too permissive and, uh, things have gotten tighter, um, but one of the things that the Utah County's indemnity pool has is equity for each owner. Um, and so, um, the, each county is an owner in that pool and then we have the different entities. So we have, um, Bruce's world, we have special service district number three, um, as separate entities within that. And each one pays, and the, the terminology is different in an indemnity pool versus we don't pay a premium, we pay a contribution.
So it's self-insurance for all the counties come on.
It's what it is, yeah. And it's, and it has saved our bacon a thousand times over.
Yep.
Another valuable thing that the commissioners, uh, will, will be able to testify to is they have a crack legal team. Um, whenever something happens, the first thing people look, do is look around and say, oh, who has deep pockets? We'll sue them. Um, I remember an incident many years ago that happened on, it was right as the oil ended out on the North Forty by the U twenty turnoff. And because it was where the oil ended, they sued U dot, they sued Iron County, they sued U H P. And, and we have this crack legal team that has been really good at helping defend us and that's part of what we pay for with our contribution to U S E P.
The other thing is, um, sometimes we've had issues with employees and they are so fantastic. That they have just been so great to, because they've, they're experienced in that. You know, our guys defend, our legal team defends, you know, bad guys, you know, really, and, and, you know, takes care of bad guys, but, and, and if, uh, prosecutes them. But, but they are, they have expertise there that we just appreciate so much.
So to summarize, Paul, the, the insurance market has gotten rough, but because of our membership within U S E P, we have been protected. The, we are going to have an increase in our contribution next year to reflect some of those reinsurance changes and things. But at the same time, the owner equity has continued to increase. One of the things that they've done, um, is they use, they, they hire actuaries and they figure out what, how many dollars do we need to have set aside for, you know, catastrophic things that we can still cover everyone? And as we grow as a state, as we grow as a county, our exposure increases and so therefore, um, the, the amount that they set aside increases, but then the rate at which they set aside, they've also increased. So they, they capture that with our, with our, our contributions, um, and then they reinvest it. And so at any time, we have, um, you know, a, a, at least, in fact, one of the things that they reported on was every single entity now, and this wasn't the case a few years ago, has at least one year's contributions as equity in the pool, which is pretty remarkable. Did you, did you have anything you wanted to add, Jen? Jen, Jen is remarkable and, and, and comes, uh, to a lot of those meetings as well, but, um, I'm just, every time I go, um, I'm just grateful, they, they bring ice cream to the meetings, which I like.
Of course you do, John.
But I'm more, but I'm, but I'm, I'm more grateful for the, for the sense of, I think about, there are times in jobs like this, you talk about, you know, things being hard. I'll wake up in the middle of the night in a cold sweat and going, oh man, what about this or that? And then I'll go, oh, wait a minute, we've got, and I, and I'll, in my own mind to comfort myself and go back to sleep, I'll enumerate the protections that we have under, under U S E P and, um, under a good sheriff's department and, you know, with the care of an H R department. you know, with the care of an H R department. I mean, I I just, I'm really grateful to be part of the county, but I'm really grateful especially for USIP. I I, I was actually nominated, I didn't win, but I I was nominated to be on the board this time and and um, regardless, I will defend USIP. Not all Utah counties are in the pool. Um, and uh, I I I think it's a horrendous thing and I, it's, I know it saved us millions of dollars.
That's great. Did they give you the ice cream before or after they told you the rate was going up? During?
Throughout the day.
I I hesitate to say, so no ice cream this time, I I meant like the U UAC meetings? This, this time they had the meetings in a movie theater, which was interesting, the seats were very comfy. But we had our meeting and then they watched a movie and I left because I was getting back for election stuff and to get this agenda updated, so anyway.
All right, thank you, thanks for that report, John, appreciate it. Well, I think we're done, so the Chair Pro Tim will declare this meeting adjourned, thank you.